Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the May 29, 2018 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Please silence any electronic devices that make noise. And if you need to take a call, we ask that you please exit the chambers and take it out in the hall. If for some reason an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the chamber, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If for some reason that staircase is blocked, please make a left and then a right and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask and we'll be glad to provide it to you. Please do not use the elevator in case of an emergency. At this time, I'll invite Pastor Dana Stauffer, the Fruitland Campus of Emmanuel Wesleyan Church, to the podium for the invocation.
Let us pray. God, I thank you so much for the beautiful day that you've blessed us with today, God. And I thank you for the city of Salisbury, the awesome things that you're doing. And we know that the people that are gathered here tonight are here because of one thing, because they care about our community. And so, Lord, I pray for those that are sitting around the table tonight that have to make decisions. We know that some may be easy and some may be hard, but, Lord, we pray, Lord, that every decision that is made is made, Lord, for the better interest of our city. We see growth and we see change. And we know that in order for things to change, sometimes it's hard, but growth has to take place. So we thank you for the wonderful things that you're doing and that you're going to continue to do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please rise now and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of certificates.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I do. And this first one, I got to apologize because she was supposed to be on vacation, but she came in tonight just for this, and I'm not sure if she knew exactly what was going to happen. But this is a certificate of appreciation to our very own Donna Haig. Donna, as I think everybody knows here, is the leader, the true leader of city government, and the person that virtually everyone knows, they go to her to get the answers. Then Mayor Ierton made a strategic and wise hire in hiring Donna onto our city government staff. Donna is our mayor's office manager, and Donna has added a new element to her title recently. Donna is the voice of Salisbury. Salisbury's new 833 SBY City Automated Phone System is voiced by Donna, offering residents an entirely new menu-driven venue for service selection by department and/or need. Amazon has Alexa. Apple has Siri, purportedly voiced by Susan Bennett. Garmin has the Australian English Karen, apparently voiced by Karen Jacobson, but Salisbury has the best. Donna Haig, the voice of Salisbury, and for that, we want to say, "Thank you, Donna."
Yay!
She would come in from Asia because now she doesn't have to take all the phone calls. Yeah, so it's worth it. It's worth it.
All you got to do is dial six and you get Donna. The secret's out! The secret's out!
That's not right.
I'm sorry. People are going to figure it out anyway because they want to get the Donna. So the next recognition that I have tonight is to someone who has helped us tremendously over the past few months, planning and preparing for an event that was a tremendous success for our community. So, Mr. Jason Chance, would you come up here? So, Jason, did you join me? If you haven't met Jason yet, Jason is the man behind the Salisbury Marathon. Jason is the man who made that event happen, brought together a huge team of people from all organizations, not just city departments, but business community, civic groups, high school groups, college groups, volunteer groups, and county and state government and federal government as well, and brought them all together. Jason has spent many years in this community and currently owns a shop in St. Michael's. However, this is a certificate that I'd like to present to Mr. Jason Chance, and this is a certificate of citizenship from the city of Salisbury. In recognition of incredible service rendered as Director of the Salisbury Marathon and the unselfish gifts of time, talent, and dedication put forth in getting the inaugural race off and running, this certificate hereby bestows honorary citizenship as a Salisburyian and all of the rights, privileges, and responsibilities hereafter entitled by the mayor and the city council on behalf of the citizens of the city of Salisbury. Jason, if ever there were a campaign to get somebody to move back to a place, this is it. Congratulations. And this is a plaque in recognition of Jason's hard work and all he's given our community and all he is continuing to give in preparing for the 2019 Ron SBY Festival and Marathon. And this is actually a version of the medal that the runners who ran the Salisbury Marathon won. So, Jason, thank you.
So, Jason, like 35 years ago, when we were playing Dungeons and Dragons, you think you and I would be sitting here looking at each other like this? No. I've known Jason all my life. He's been a friend for a very long time. So, man, 800 kids do good.
Dungeons and Dragons.
The voters had none.
Yeah.
We survived, though.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rudisil, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good, thank you. Fine, thank you.
On the consent agenda, we have the May 7th special meeting minutes, Resolution Number 2840, accepting the donation from Eagle Scout Wyatt Duncan, Boy Scout Troop Number 185 of Delmarva Council, to gift and install a public chess checkers table to the city of Salisbury for use in the Ben's Red Swings Park. Resolution Number 2841, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Energy Administration for the purpose of accepting and expending grant funds in the amount of $27,730. Resolution Number 2842, approving the city's action plan for community development block grant funds for CDBG program year 2018, and to authorize the mayor's signature thereto. And Resolution Number 2843, authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the memorandum of understanding for the Waukesha County Public Entities Health Insurance Consortium, changing the rate stabilization reserve percentage from 14% to 12%. And that's it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Mike Low, good evening. How are you, Mike?
I'm doing well. Good evening, everyone. So, the first item on the award of bids agenda is Contract Number 137-18, Police Vehicle Upfitting. The Department of Procurement received a request from Salisbury Police Department to solicit bids from Certified Sound Off Signal Blueprint 3.0 vendors to furnish and install equipment to outfit seven Ford Interceptor Utility Police Vehicles. Installed equipment includes emergency lighting, siren, and speaker systems, consoles and docking stations, mobile data equipment, prisoner transport cages, and other necessities critical for safe and patrol-ready police vehicles. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the city of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of four vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of May 16, 2018, at 2:30 p.m. The bids were received from Global Public Safety, Delmarva Communications, Inc., Priority Install, and Blue Tech LLC. The bid amounts are in your council packet. Additional details regarding sound off certification, upfitting plans, and contract awarded recommendations are included in the attached departmental memo. Funds are available on Salisbury Police Department Vehicles Account 21021-577025. I hereby request council's approval to award Contract 137-18 to the low bidder, Global Public Safety, in the amount of $137,129.28.
Any questions? Okay, next item.
All right, the next item is a declaration of surplus for Salisbury Police Department Duty Weapons. The Department of Procurement received a request from Salisbury Police Department declaring the following handguns surplus: One Glock 45 Caliber Model 21 Serial Number BFRA 694 and One Glock 45 Caliber Model 21 Serial BFRA 653. Pun declaration of surplus as approved by council. The aforementioned handguns will be given to retired police officers Sergeant Danny Parsons and Captain Cheryl Rantz as retirement gifts.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we thank the two officers for their service, obviously. All right, this time, we will have a public hearing on Resolution Number 2832. To modify the annexation agreement for the area of land previously made a part of corporate limit of the city of Salisbury, known as Merritt Mill Road/Smith Annexation, effective as of February 27, 2014, through Resolution Number 2356, and located on the southerly side of and binding on Merritt Mill Road, east of the intersection of Merritt Mill Road and Philip Morris Drive. Anyone who wishes to speak on this topic, please rise and be sworn in. See, here... All right, hearing, there is no one. We'll close the public hearing. I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2832.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Andy?
Great. Resolution Number 2832, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to modify the annexation agreement for the area of land previously made a part of the corporate limit of the city of Salisbury, known as the Merritt Mill Road/Smith Annexation, effective as of February 27, 2014, through Resolution Number 2356, and located on the southerly side of and binding on Merritt Mill Road, east of the intersection of Merritt Mill Road and Philip Morris Drive. Whereas the city of Salisbury through Resolution Number 2356, effective as of February 27, 2014, annexed the area of land known as the Merritt Mill Road/Smith Annexation, and whereas annexation of the area covered in Resolution Number 2356 was subject to the terms, conditions, and agreements of certain exhibits, one of which was an annexation agreement, Exhibit B, dated January 15, 2014, and whereas Resolution Number 2357 was also passed by the city of Salisbury, which adopted an annexation plan for the property, and whereas Penrose Property LLC, insert the parent company of, the new owner of the property, insert Merritt Mill Road LLC, and the new owner petitioners, have requested a modification of the aforementioned annexation agreement for its development, known as Merritt Mill Townhouses, and whereas existing annexation agreement allows for 6.5 units per acre for a total of 72 units, and Strike Penrose Properties LLC, insert petitioners, have requested a modification to the annexation agreement to allow for 6.9 units per acre for a total of 75 units, as reflected in the proposed site plan, and whereas Strike Penrose Properties LLC, insert petitioners, have also requested a waiver of their affordable housing contribution for 67 units, that the project meet the National Green Building Standards with Energy Star New Homes in lieu of the lead, and to allow Penrose Management Company to perform the same roles as a homeowners association normally would perform, and whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission held a hearing to address requested changes to the aforementioned annexation agreement and forwarded the requested changes to the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury for review at a recent work session, and whereas the city of Salisbury's desire to accept certain proposed modifications to the aforementioned annexation agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury that proposed modifications to annexation agreement to allow for 6.9 units per acre, to waive their affordable housing contributions associated with 67 units of Merritt Mill Townhouses, to require the project to meet the National Green Building Standards, along with Energy Star New Homes in lieu of the lead, and to allow Penrose Management Company to perform the same role as a homeowners association are hereby accepted. And be it therefore resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury that the proposed site plan in lieu of the original concept plan contained in the original annexation agreement attached heretofore as Exhibits A and B are accepted and made part hereof. And be it further resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury that in accordance with the local government article statutory requirements concerning annexations, the council hold a public hearing on the modifications of the annexation agreement hereby proposed on May 29, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the city-county office building, and the city administrator, or myself, shall cause a public notice of that time and place of said hearing to be published not further, not fewer than two times at not less than weekly intervals in a newspaper or general circulations of the city of Salisbury, which said notice shall be specified by a time and place at which the council of the city of Salisbury will hold a public hearing on the resolution, which dates shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of the publication specified above. And be it further resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury that this resolution shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passage, subject, however, to the right of referendum as contained in the local government article of the Maryland
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution. Do we have a motion to amend? Is there a second to the motion?
On line 23, we need to insert the parent company of between LLC and the. Line 24, strike has, insert have, and insert Merritt Mill Road LLC, and the new owner in parentheses petitioners after property. Line 29, Strike Penrose Properties LLC, and insert petitioners, strike has, and insert have. On line 33, Strike Penrose Properties LLC, and insert petitioners, strike has, and insert
Any comments or questions?
Are there any besides these?
Just the inserts of the...
Just the small inserts. Are there any other changes?
No.
The proposed site plan is the same as it was before?
Okay. Yes.
I know you explained this to me before, Mr. Mayor. Just for my peace of mind, to make sure I'm understanding this, $134,000 waiver that they aren't having to pay the city, that's money that would have gone into an account for affordable housing, or?
It's money that, yes, could be used to fund another affordable housing project, not general fund. So it would be earmarked, essentially.
But we, it was negotiated prior that we would waive that for them?
Back whenever this annexation occurred. And we've never charged an affordable housing project money to pay for somebody else's affordable housing project.
So in the end, if I'm correct, we are going to go with the $134,000 credit. We did not do the hookup credit. I just, at this point, what the question that I've gotten is, if a company can continue to do what they wanted to do after the, what was our, what was our credit? For warrants, it was three?
Two hundred and eighty-five or eighty-two.
Something like that. Maybe I'll just ask the Penrose gentleman. I mean, at this point, the question becomes is, what's, where's, how much profit was the company going to make off this anyway with the affordable housing credits and the credit from, credits from the state government that you could afford to let $281,000?
Well, that's probably long-term down the road.
Well, no, certainly. I just, when someone asks, you know, are you for affordable housing, and you say yes because you're allowing, you're saying that you'll support the credits for a company, but a company can still afford to do it even after you take away $281,000, my question would be, to be honest with you, how much profit do they expect to make off in the end? But I'll go ahead and contact them on my own.
Yeah, that would be appropriate. Okay, we have a motion to amend. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That was on the amendment, and now we will vote on Resolution Number 2832 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. The annexation agreement modification will become effective July 14, 2018. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2485 for the second reading. Do I have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
I was thinking of everything that Mr. Tillman has to read here.
That's Mr. Tillman's. He's going to do it in one breath. Mr. Tillman, good evening.
Good evening. I've read this previously. It's ordinance number 2485. In short, basically, it's reallocating spending from the 2003 bonds for the purchase of the police radio system. That's the gist of it. It's an ordinance that the city of Salisbury, Maryland entitled an Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Ordinance Number 1870, passed by the council of the city of Salisbury on January 27, 2003, approved by the mayor of the city on February 3, 2003, and effective on February 3, 2003, is amended and supplemented by ordinance number 1888, passed by the council on December 22, 2003, approved by the mayor on January 5, 2004, and effective on January 5, 2004. Also, ordinance number 2081, passed by the council on August 10, 2009, approved by the mayor on August 10, 2009, effective on August 10, 2009, and is further amended and supplemented by ordinance number 2317, passed by the council on March 23, 2015, approved by the mayor on March 30, 2015, and effective on March 30, 2015, in order to authorize and empower the city of Salisbury to use and apply a portion of the proceeds of the $5,614,000 City of Salisbury Infrastructure Bond 2003 Series A issued on June 18, 2003, and held by the trustee for certain bonds of the Community Development Administration identified herein for the public purpose of funding cost of the project identified as police communication system. In addition to the projects identified in ordinance number 1870, is amended and supplemented by ordinance number 1888, ordinance number 2081, and ordinance number 2317. Modifying certain definitions contained in ordinance number 2317 in order to provide that the proceeds of the 2003 bond shall not be applied to the projects identified in ordinance number 2317 as marina signage and fence improvements, authorizing and directing officials of the city to approve, execute, and deliver amendments, modifications, or supplements to certain documents, agreements, certifications, and instruments executed and delivered in connection with the issuance of the 2003 bond or the $4,828,000 City of Salisbury Public Improvement Refunding Bond, Series 2011B bond, proceeds of which were applied to refund and redeem the 2003 bond, and such additional bonds, agreements, certificates, or instruments is maybe necessary or desirable in order to reflect or effectuate matters provided for in this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed, providing that this title is a fair statement of the substance of the ordinance, and otherwise generally relating to the use of the bonds of the 2003 bond and the 2011B bond.
Okay. At this time, we are going to open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please stand and be sworn in. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we will now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2485 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2482 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Boda and Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman?
As ordinance number 2482 is amended on May 29, 2018, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government administration of the city of Salisbury, Maryland for the period July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water, sewer, parking authority, city, marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, to fund operations of the city of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects, be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule C anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandum in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be in the same as hereby set, at .9832 dollars per $100 of assessed valuation of real property, at $2.81 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as railroads and utilities, and at $2.40 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for all other personal property, subject to taxation by the city of Salisbury for the general fund purposes including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from water and sewer for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And paragraph two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2018, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Annuated Code of Maryland as amended. And be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, excuse me, by the Salisbury City Council, that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance be held at 4:30 p.m. on May 7, 2018, in Room 301 of the city government office building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland, and be it further ordained by the city council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. And the schedules listed there show the amounts prior to the amendment, and then on the right-hand side, the amended amounts. side, the amended amounts.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-two for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-three for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman?
Okay, as amended on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, ordinance number twenty-four-eight-three, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend water and sewer rates, increase rates by, it's striking out eight percent, and putting in, inserting in its place five percent, and making said charges effective for all bills dated October first, two thousand and eighteen, and thereafter and less than until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget of the city of Salisbury, and the appropriations thereby made and established for the purposes of water and sewer document, departments, excuse me, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Salisbury, that the following water and sewer rate schedule shall be adopted by the city of Salisbury. Would you like me to read it all again, or just point out that it's all been reduced?
Just point out the reductions.
Okay. The, uh, the lower figures, the higher figures previously were struck with a line through them next to each one of the categories, and in bold is the new amount, which has been reduced pursuant to the general reduction specified previously.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-three for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-four for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to set fees for FY two thousand and nineteen and thereafter and less than until subsequently revised or changed, whereas the fees, uh, whereas the fees, charges by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget of the city of Salisbury, and whereas the fees listed in the attached FY two thousand and nineteen schedule, fee schedule exhibit one, are an attempt to identify and list all fees, some of which are revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget of the city of Salisbury, and whereas some of the fees may have been inadvertently omitted from the schedule, and existing fees, any existing fees not listed in the attached FY two thousand and nineteen fee schedule shall remain as currently set forth in the Salisbury Municipal Code. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached exhibit one FY two thousand and nineteen fee schedule shall be adopted by the city of Salisbury, and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fees, fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently added. And be it further ordained and acted, this ordinance will, was introduced to council on the twenty-third of April and presumably passed this evening.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-four for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-six for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan. Mr. Tillman?
This is ordinance number twenty-four-eight-six, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY two thousand and eighteen general fund budget to appropriate funding to the clerk's office training account, whereas the city was, has budgeted in the clerk, city clerk training schools account funds for the registration fees for the city clerk and assistant clerk to attend conferences and continuing education classes, and whereas the registration fees were paid to the International Institute of Municipal Clerks in the amount of one thousand and sixty-six dollars in November two thousand and seventeen for the assistant clerk to attend the annual conference and academy classes to be held in Norfolk, Virginia, and whereas the assistant city clerk Diane Carter has received a scholarship award for one thousand and sixty-six dollars from the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association for her registration fees, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and eighteen general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase revenues, oh-one-zero-zero-zero dash four-five-six-nine-one-one by one thousand and sixty-six dollars. Increase training, one-one-one-zero-zero dash five-five-five-five oh-four by an equivalent amount.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-six for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-seven for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtan.
Two-four-eight-seven, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for Station sixteen rear driveway paving project, whereas ordinance number twenty-four-twenty-three appropriated funds for the FY two thousand and eighteen budget, and whereas included in Schedule B in ordinance twenty-four-twenty-three was an appropriation for Station sixteen rear driveway paving in the amount of forty thousand dollars, and whereas the unforeseen site conditions have caused this project to exceed initial budget estimates, and whereas in the same bond, there are funds from other projects available to be reallocated, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. And the amounts are being reduced in certain accounts, let's, uh, recycled truck is being reduced by twenty-eight-seven-sixty-four, dump truck reduced by fifty-five-hundred, bicycle master plan by twenty-nine-sixty-six, and an increase in Station sixteen driveway by thirty-seven-two-thirty. And there is also, on the expenditure side, recycled truck is being reduced by the amount identified above, dump truck by the same amount as identified above, bicycle master plan, uh, the same, and then an increase in the Station sixteen driveway construction showing that the revenues and expenditures balance.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-seven for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-eight for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Rudisil? Mr. Tillman?
Twenty-four-eight-eight is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY two thousand and eighteen general fund to appropriate additional funds for electric, for street lighting, whereas the traffic control branch has determined additional budget, budgeted funds are required to maintain street lighting through the end of two thousand and eighteen, and whereas the city of Salisbury has determined there is insufficient budget available in order to count, in, in other accounts to transfer to cover the amount required, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and eighteen general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase in the Department of Field Operations Traffic Control, two-two-zero-zero-zero dash five-five-six-two-oh-one by one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and an increase in the current year surplus account, oh-one-zero-zero-zero dash four-six-nine-eight-one-oh by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments?
I was just gonna let you know that while you were gone, the poor assistant city administrators had to show up here hat in hand begging for money, you and the mayor gone and did this last. It was a, it was a, it was a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar ask that day between the lighting and the, and the fire department. So we gave them the requisite hard time, as you would have wanted us to do, but I did request that we start thinking about getting a new consultant for lighting. In my experience with it, this experience with it, this didn't happen overnight. The Public Service Commission allowed Delmarva Power to jack the rates up on the city, and no one came and told the city, and that's why we have an electricity consultant, and this is not the first time that we know.
I wonder if all the political financial contributions from these power companies into the general assembly, I would imagine they would total more than a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Not having gotten any of them myself over the years, and having spent so much of our time in the dark riding around getting the numbers off the streetlights, trying to get them turned on. But we did discuss, and it is in the minutes, that it's, it's time to sit down with, and I shall leave him unnamed, should I say something that might not be nice, but it's time that we do that, because if, if our electricity consultant doesn't know that that's in the legislature, or that's in front of the Public Service Commission, then I don't feel that he, I mean, a hundred and forty thousand dollars is two, as you know, is two police officers for one year coming out of surplus, just like that, because of an oversight. And I don't think that there's anybody that you have, or that I have, or that is tasked with, you know, following the Maryland Public Service Commission and, and what they do. And that's really that person's job for the money we pay him. So I'm gonna vote for this tonight, but it will be with a great big, we're going to have another meeting hopefully about this particular consultant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I may?
You got his name?
Well, no. All I was gonna do...
I mean, I know the name.
Yeah, I know you know the name. Um, you know, I, I don't know enough about, um, you know, this or the politics behind it and the federal or state level to suggest that, um, it is or isn't a surprise, but I do know this. Um, you know, we're getting taken for a ride by, and look, Delmarva Power is part of this community, and, you know, we appreciate the employees that are in this community, but we're getting taken for a ride by their parent company, and they don't care how it impacts our community, and it is, it is hurting us, and it's hurting, and, and there is very little, clearly very little justification from a operating standpoint. I mean, it's sudden and significant and not connected to what's happening in markets or anything like that, because in fact, you're seeing kilowatt prices going down when we're buying electricity, and just a fee going up. And, um, the thing that we could do to change all of that, so just to remind every single member of the council that we can lobby, and I don't know that we'll be successful, but the thing that we can do to change all of that is, um, you know, we can own the streetlights, we can own the streetlights. And so once again, there will be a bill in front of the Maryland General Assembly this year trying to allow that to happen, and hopefully we'll make some progress, although hope is about our only course of action right now.
I think Councilman Boda, you said to us at the work session, which I think is worth repeating, what your role will be with the mayor's association and your priority next year?
Yeah, part of our, I'm gonna be on the president-elect for the Eastern Shore Association of Municipalities, and this is gonna be a priority. I talked to delegate Anderton, expressed our concern over this, and he's on board, so we're gonna be working closely with him as a part of that lobbying for this bill.
Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-eight for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes no.
Oh, if I'd known you were, I'd have known the same thing.
That's why we don't talk. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-four-eight-nine for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan.
Two-four-eight-nine is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend the language of chapter two-point-three-two, purchase and sales of the Salisbury Municipal Code to increase the threshold for minor non-recurring purchases, whereas the mayor and city council requested that the procurement department periodically review chapter two-point-three-two, and whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement, chapter two-point-three demonstrates a need for its periodic review evaluation amendment to keep the chart current, chapter current, and whereas chapter two-point-three-two requires all purchases to go through the director of procurement with the exception of direct purchases, and whereas chapter two-point-three-two-point-oh-four-oh of the current code allows for direct purchases to be made for any non-recurring unit cost of four hundred dollars or less with an aggregate cost of one thousand dollars or less, and whereas the current direct purchase threshold amount was last changed in two thousand and one, and whereas it has been determined that it's ineff, in, excuse me, inefficient and costly to the city of Salisbury to limit the amount to four hundred dollars, and whereas it is desired to eliminate the aggregate cost threshold and increase the threshold for direct purchases to the amount of two thousand dollars, and whereas the Department of Procurement does recommend approval of these proposed code changes, now therefore be it ordained and acted by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that chapter two-point-three-two be amended as follows. Under the heading two-point-three-two-oh-four-oh, direct purchases, the, um, language is added there in line thirty-nine, the addition of the, um, on the open market and any minor items, and is added non-recurring supplies. And then down below in line forty, the words four hundred dollars are struck, and in its place is substituted two thousand dollars. And in lines forty-two and forty-three, the addition of the language, such purchases may be made without soliciting competitive quotations as long as the using agency determines the price to be reasonable. And each direct purchase shall be made in accordance with the rules or the procedures established by the department. And then under subparagraph B, again, the words four hundred dollars are struck and two thousand dollars are substituted in its place. And then under two-point-three-two-point-oh-eight-zero, again, on line fifty-nine, strike the words four hundred dollars and substitute two thousand dollars, and down in line sixty-four, the words four hundred dollars are struck and two thousand dollars are substituted. Other than that, the section remains the same.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-four-eight-nine for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ms. Nicholas, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. Uh, in that case, I'd like to make an announcement. There will be a special meeting on June fourth at four-thirty prior to the work session to approve the following. Ordinance number two-four-eight-seven for the second reading, ordinance number two-four-eight-eight for the second reading, and ordinance number two-four-nine-zero for the first reading. That will take place, as I said, prior to the work session. Okay?
One thing, I believe our Eagle Scout, Wyatt Duncan, has shown up, he's here. Thank you for the donation and the project, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Didn't see you come in. By the time you finish, I, I imagine you'll have touched every area of Salisbury with your donations and contributions, so we appreciate it very much.
Mr. President, and if I can just add, if you haven't visited yet, stop by Ben's Red Swings, it's installed, the chess table is installed.
Yeah, we saw it.
You've already seen it?
Yeah, it's really cool.
Yeah, it is really cool.
Nice.
Handicap accessible, wheelchair accessible as well.
Yep, yep. Okay. Hearing there's no more public comments, we'll adjourn the meeting, and I'll entertain a motion now to convene a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. 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 So moved.